It's nine o'clock and so it's time to start our staff meeting this morning. And I, for those of you who are wondering why there's cookies over in the corner, we want to recognize an outstanding achievement by the Sedgwick County Treasurer, Linda Kazire. Linda, are you hiding back there?
I am.
She won the national award for outstanding.
I'm the county treasurer. It's a group from NACCO. It's the National Association of County Collectors, Treasurers, and Finance Officers.
We need to emphasize, this isn't county or state. This is national. Very big deal. So congratulations and good work. And so the cookies are in your honor.
Oh, thank you.
We don't have Pepsi Cola or water. I guess that's up to yourself. Everybody else, you gotta get a cookie.
You get to pick who gets the cookies, Linda. You get to pick who gets the cookies.
The outstanding part is for everybody that works for Sedgwick County because everybody works very hard that works here and we're like a family. You know, we fight like brothers and sisters someday, but we love each other the next day. And I just want to say that this award's not just for me, but it's for everyone.
Very well said. Thank you. We agree with that. Okay, well, we'll get cookies in a little bit. In the meantime, we're going to talk a little bit about the budget process tomorrow. And before we start, Commissioners, you have anything you want to bring, say before we start?
Yeah.
You do?
Lots of stuff that I don't want to talk about. But one thing I know what I'm going to talk about is, I got a, and I've talked a little about this, I think maybe it's, it's a DIO looking at us. I had somebody who got a notice for a one cent property tax bill because they, they're paying on these scheduled things. And for some reason, the coupons, they rounded off and left us a penny off. Okay, she paid all the coupons, but it left a penny off. Can we have DIO look at the program? There's got to be a way to do that. Obviously, they had an odd cent and they got a bill saying, you gotta pay one penny or, you know, you're delinquent. And even though she went in and she has a schedule, there's just a computer, we'll be able to fix that, I think, to avoid that. I mean, that cost us more to send it off than what it was worth. And she comes and complains to me that doesn't make it good government. I don't think it does. But I'm sure it's just a computer thing. If, you know, if anything's left over, they do it, but there's got to be a way to fix that to let that from happening at the outset. I don't know.
Well, we could.
Oh, there you go.
Yeah.
Do you follow what I'm saying, though?
I think so.
Okay. If you have any questions, you know, let me know. Obviously, there was a, the number probably had to be an odd number that couldn't be divided amongst four or five or whatever that you divided out for, and there was a little bit left over.
Yeah.
Okay. Hey, so, all right, we're almost ready to start. So do we, do we need to say that Tim Kaufman's going to be a year older pretty soon? You have a birthday coming up?
I do.
All right.
Friday.
Well, happy birthday.
Same to you.
Okay. Well, happy birthday. You can have one of Linda's celebration cookies.
Could use the taxpayer money, right?
That's right. All right, well, I think we're ready for whatever you or Lindsay has.
So today, Commissioners, we're going to talk about two, two issues. Lindsay's going to do all the talking. One, we're going to cover levy live, just in case tomorrow we have a desire to use that. So she's going to go through that a little bit today and what that looks like and how we can use it effectively tomorrow. Secondly, we're going to talk about the Fire District mill levy. And with that, Lindsay, take it away.
Okay. So the first thing I want to do this morning is introduce and reintroduce a file we've used in the past called Levy Live. And so what this file does is attempts to track any changes the day of budget adoption to either the county or Fire District budgets. We'll have separate versions for both, to the extent we can preload those ahead of time. With any decisions you all know you want to talk about, I'm happy to do that and have that pulled up when we get to the meeting tomorrow, if you want to let me know. Otherwise, you will see a file that looks a lot like this. This is the blank version. It has already been set up to display what the 2018 recommended budget is. And because that is what has been published, not just the book itself, but actually, we've had the publication in the newspaper, any changes we make tomorrow, we want to make sure to capture appropriately that you all have motions that approve those changes so that we can make sure you have the correct resolution to sign tomorrow. We will have prepared resolutions and motions at your desks. So you'll have, I mean, as many options as we can think of ahead of time. If there are any specific motions you want us to prepare, we'll be happy to do that. But I wanted to walk through how to use this file real quick. So at your seats, you have a handout that looks like this. What this does is show the different options we can use to make decisions. And so tomorrow, when you're making motions to make changes, I may ask you some targeted questions, just to make sure I really understand your intent. It's not to be insubordinate, it's to make sure I'm including the right change for you in the description. So you'll see numbers one through five on the sheet relate to expenses. The description will tell you how it will impact the budget and the forecast. And then you'll see off to the right, a more visual way of seeing exactly what change you should expect to see, depending on what category we use. So for example, if you wanted to increase or decrease expenditures in our property tax-supported funds and have a corresponding increase or decrease in the levy, we would want to use option one. Just a reminder that at this point, we can't increase the levy any greater than what was already published, but if we start making changes and then adding things back in, we may need to do a mixture of these options. Number two shows if we expect to make a change in the overall expenditure budget, but we expect to be able to fund that maybe with an increase in fees. An example would be maybe if we wanted to do the merchant service fee and convenience fee change, which has already been built into the budget, but if we needed to do that, that would be an example of how that might be accomplished. Number three is if we want to add something and we don't expect any additional revenue to come in as a result, we just want to fund it with existing cash or fund balance. And so it would overall increase the budget and have an impact to the forecast, but we would just assume that there would be a drawdown and would be supported through that fund balance. Option number four and five, really both of those are the ones I expect that we'll see used tomorrow if you do want to make changes. The first one, an expenditure that's associated with a transfer, is simply that we plan to move an expected expense from one area of the budget to another. So let's say we had some budget authority in the CFO Fund Center that you all wanted, and I had already planned to spend it, the budget authority is already in place. You could make that motion. We would transfer the budget authority from the CFO Fund Center to the B O C C Fund Center. Overall, it wouldn't increase the overall budget because we're just shifting it, and it also wouldn't change the forecast because we'd already planned to spend that money. The next one, expenditure contingency, is a little different. It does assume that we'll take budget authority from someplace in the budget that already exists, likely the operating reserve or the general fund reserve, or maybe even the B O C C contingency, and we would move that to whatever division is receiving that money. But because it's in a contingency, it's likely not forecasted to be spent, so we would move that expense. It would not increase the overall budget, but it would have an impact on the forecast. So those are the expenditure categories we'll talk about tomorrow, to the extent you all decide to change any of the spending recommendations. Below, number six, is revenue-only property tax. And this is where you don't intend to impact the expenditure side of the budget, but you do want to change the property tax levy. This will be the option that we'll look at when it comes to the Fire District, because we have had some discussion about potentially changing what mill levy rate is included. So when we do that, it will have the impact of reducing the levy. Likewise, it will reduce the forecast because we're removing revenue from that, but it will not impact the overall expenditure side of the budget unless we do one of the expenditure changes up above as well. The next one is revenue-only for fees. Maybe you all decide you want to reduce the fee that's out there. This would be the place in the budget where we would do that. Again, it wouldn't change the expenditure side, but it would change the forecast because we'd be planning to bring in less revenue and it would change the revenue budget. And then finally, unknown. If we're just talking about something and we don't quite know how we're going to structure it yet, we'll put a placeholder in there called unknown, but before the budget is adopted, we'll need to pick one of these other categories to have that happen. So just to familiarize you real quick with the form itself, as you talk tomorrow, we'll be filling this out if you, if you ask us to pull it up. We'll say whether we want to include it or exclude it from the table up here. And so if we click the check mark, that's going to tell us it's going to be included. Once there's a vote, we'll have a way to indicate whether there was a yea or nay, which should help the clerk with tracking motions and help us with making sure we have the right resolution. The overall priority category is really more if you have six or seven things you're debating about, not sure we'll have that, but we may. And so if we do, then that would be just an option. It's not a mandatory field. Description would be just a very brief outline of what it is that you're wanting to make. In the past, where we have shifted funding within economic development to another area of the budget, we would say shift from EcoDevo to whatever spot, just a very brief way to describe that. We'll have the amount if it's a, if it's a reduction, either in revenue or in expense. Obviously, that will be shown as a negative number. The fund type, this is primarily driven to show us tax fund changes because we're pretty well locked into our tax fund budgets once the budget is adopted. The grant funds, as you know, will come to you throughout the year and can be amended with just a simple agenda item. But once the tax fund is set and once the tax levy is set, there is no, no manipulating it without re-adopting the entire budget, which is certainly not going to be my recommendation. Funding source, this will be, that's what this sheet correlates to. So we'll have to pick one of those so that the totals at the top know how to respond appropriately. The other totals or the other columns here are locked. They simply will show you if we're going to do a revenue reduction, what the change to the mill levy will be, along with what the change to the overall tax rate will be. So if, for example, we wanted to cut $25,000 from the levy, that will have a corresponding impact of a mill levy rate reduction. And it will have, because we plan for not everyone to pay their taxes, the impact to the levy actually will be a little greater than that $25,000. So just, we'll look at that in the Fire District. So I don't want to get too far in the weeds right now. So for example, if tomorrow we wanted to say we're going to shift budget from CFO to B O C C, we're going to say that's going to be a $50,000 shift. We are all in the general fund, so I would select a tax fund. The funding source in this case, again, would be a transfer because we're simply moving it from one place in the budget to another. And so what you'll see at the top then is there are no real changes to your B O C C deliberation column. However, if we do what we talked about with a contingency, let's say instead of shifting it from CFO, we want to shift from the B O C C contingency to the B O C C. That's in a contingency we likely hadn't planned for it to be spent. So I'm going to select the expenditure contingency category, and what you'll see now is a $50,000 increase to the operating deficit because we have now added in an expense we hadn't planned on. It doesn't change the overall budget because the budget authority existed, but we hadn't planned to spend it. So that's generally how this will work. And again, so tomorrow, if I'm asking you questions, I'm really just trying to ferret out which category it is that we ought to use. So any questions generally about the file itself or any of the categories before we move to the Fire District? Okay. Well, then we are going to look at the same file, but we're going to look at it for the Fire District. And so this has been preloaded with all of the options we've discussed to this point. What you'll see at the top is the 18.414 mill levy rate that was included in the recommended budget. Again, that was based on the final rate to support the 2017 budget. Since then, we've talked about reducing the rate to what was included in last year's recommended budget. So 18.414 is the amount that was technically adjusted. Before technical adjustment, it was 18.371 mils. That impact would be about $36,955 less in anticipated revenue actually received. The impact you can see there would be to reduce the overall mill levy rate by .043 mils, and the levy itself would decrease by $38,433. So to show you the impact of that, we'll go ahead and select the include option here. And so now you can see above that our forecasted surplus in the Fire District goes down a bit. You can see our mill levy rate drops to 18.371 mils, but overall, the budgeted expenditures don't change. And again, that's because we selected that revenue-only property tax category. So the next option that we've discussed is reducing the estimated mill levy rate to the 2010 budget level. That was the last time the Commission took deliberate action to try and reduce the mill levy rate, and that was reduced to a technically adjusted rate in November of 18.336 mils. So if we include that one and our estimates, you'll see, again, the budget doesn't change. Our surplus is reduced somewhat by about $67,000, and our levy goes down. We also have talked about the truth in taxation provision. And so the Fire District is a special district, is still subject to some of the older property tax lid rules. The current property tax lid applies to cities and counties. Since this is a special district, it's still living under that old type of formula. And so what that means then is if we adopt a budget with a levy that's greater than the allowed amount, before you adopt that budget, you have to adopt a resolution saying that's your intent to do that. And then, once the budget is actually adopted with that levy in it, we have to run a publication within two weeks in the official newspaper of the county, basically saying, here's last year's levy, here's this year's levy, here's the estimated mill rate, and the vote was five to oh, four to one, three to two. And that would be what we have to run, and then we're done with the provisions. And of course, the clerks are here in the room, Kelly and Karen, so if you have any specific questions about that, I'll be happy to defer to those lovely folks. But in order for this budget to be, or this property tax levy, to be less than the allowed limit, we would have to reduce the mill levy rate, estimated mill levy rate, to 18.192 mils, or about $190,000. And so you can see how that looks up above. Now, because the recommended budget has already been published with this higher rate, and because most of our discussion contemplates adopting a budget with a levy that's higher than that minimum, we likely will still need to do that truth in taxation resolution before you adopt your budget, before this actual discussion happens. But if you adopt a budget with this lower rate, we won't have to do the publication. We still have to go through the steps just in case, but you wouldn't, there wouldn't be any actual publication or costs associated with that in the long run. So I think what we're hoping to get today is maybe a feel for what the motion ought to be tomorrow, so we can make sure we have the right motion prepared for you for adoption. I think from what I've heard, 18.371 mils is likely the preference. And so we've started building some motions based on that. But certainly, if there's any other option that maybe that's not even listed here that you'd want to do, then we'd love to hear that, so we can make sure we've got the right information for you tomorrow.
So just, just so I can clear, we, the truth in, in taxation notice, it's driven by the fact of an increase in the valuation.
Right. Right. So our assessed value increased 4.5, estimated 4.5% in the Fire District. Because we're under those older rules, we have one year of CPI that we can rely on instead of the five-year average on the property tax lid side. And so that's about 1.3, 1.4%.
Okay. It has to do with how much we're taking more money out of the Fire, assessing more money in the Fire District. It doesn't really have to do with the...
Right. There is no proposal to increase really the mill levy rate or to increase the tax rate.
Richard, you want?
Yeah, yeah, the truth in taxation, because we're bringing in more than, than inflation, which is...
Right. Which is, it's kind of a backward-looking thing.
That's that one resolution, that we had to reduce the mill levy.
Right.
And so, well, there's two things that go into it, you know? People see the property taxes because their assessment goes up, which is going to end the mill levy and, and that. And unlike both of them, if we do nothing, don't do the first one or two, then the mill levy is, is going to be moving up just a little bit. So I'd like to see us address one of those two issues, basically. I think the easiest thing is to set the target mill levy of that, that top one, I can't, I'm sorry.
The 18.371.
Whatever that is.
Is that easier?
I can reduce it down, but I don't think, that 18.371, and just tell staff that every year, that's the target. But without, I mean, I, I don't, I could support the truth in taxation, as long as I know we have a set target that stays the same if we move forward. We don't have to be arriving, but, you know what I'm saying? I think they're getting kind of a double whammy if the praise value goes up and the mill levy is slowly going up. I know it's not much, but every year it adds up and then, and we're saying we're not, so that's kind of where I'm at. I'd be willing to accept that first one, there.
I'd be willing to follow the lead with my esteemed colleagues.
And there's no reporting here.
Do you want, do you want sort of a, so you know how to make the motion? You'd like to kind of have a consensus of that might be the way we're heading?
If possible, yes. Otherwise, we'll just prepare several different motions and have them ready for you, and you all can pick which one strikes your fancy tomorrow.
Well, I don't want to do anything that's, you know, not, not according to Hoyle as far as open meetings and voting and all that, but I mean, I think perhaps that would be a consensus.
Okay.
Let me just, do I make the comment?
Yeah.
I'm willing to support any of the, any of the above. I think they're all fine. Whatever the other four of them want, I'll support whatever they, majority of them want to do, that's fine with me. But I will make the point that since we have published this budget, if we were to make that change, that's roughly a four-cent tax cut per month on a $100,000 home. I, I do think we're setting ourselves up for criticism. We did that a couple of years ago when we kind of established a, a policy to lock in a mill levy 29.359. I think it's a great policy. We ought to lock it in, in other words, ignore any technical adjustments. I think that's a great idea. But the fact that we're doing it now, I do think we're setting ourselves up for the confusion that people think we're trying to do a tax cut, thanks for the four cents. But that's, that'll be the message. It won't be the message like, no, that we understand that we're locking in a mill levy, our process has changed, and that's why we do this. It's not about the tax, it's really not about the tax cut in this case. Such a small amount of money. The policy, I think, is the, is the important part that we're trying to talk about here, but that's not what the public will hear. They'll hear about, you know, thanks for the tax cut, four cents per month. That'll become the message. And I guess, to me, that's really not the point. It's really about trying to establish a policy and follow that policy. I don't know how we effectively message that out, to the extent that we've already published the budget. I think that, again, the message is in the hands of the media, and we tried to communicate that two years ago, and we're not, we're not successful. So again, I'm willing to support that. If that's what the majority wants to do, that's fine. I'll go with whichever you all choose. I'm, I'm not going to drive this, this issue. I'll support any of the, any of those four options that sign with me. I do, I do think the policy that says we'll lock in and ignore technical adjustments is a great policy. I like that idea. But whether any one of these is the right number, to me, I'm willing to go with whichever you think is best.
I would say if we, that first option is not a tax cut. We're simply saying the target for this budget is the same target as last year.
It would be, I think, though, a technical tax cut, because right now, they're being assessed 18.414 mils. Now, the plan would be for them to be...
We don't know what the final budget is.
Right. We don't, we don't know what the technically adjusted rate will be in November.
Right. And we're saying, now, if we went back to those other two, then that, to me, is more of a tax cut because it is, I mean, it is, I mean, it is intentionally going below the target of this thing. So we're using for next year's budget, the same target that we use for this year. Now, we, we have a proposed budget that contemplates an increase, but we're saying we're not going to increase the target.
Right.
So I think we're holding steady by using the first one. The other two could be called a tax reduction. It gets kind of confusing and I...
And the key to it is what you said initially, is that it is, it was the estimated mill levy for 2016 before the technical adjustments.
Right. We're using the same one, and then we'll go through this process, and it may, that actual may end up being kind of...
It could.
Close state. I mean, because it's going to end up a little bit, that's what it varies every year, but then we're going to reset it at that same one, but we're not going backwards and reducing it, so.
And you got to start somewhere, so.
Yeah. At some point, you have to say, this is where it's at.
Right.
There is a difference between the way we're doing the, the Commission budget, the county budget versus the Fire District budget, though. One of them is using a targeted mill levy and has, all the estimates are based on that because we implemented that policy and it's still, it's still in place. It is a change for the Fire District. Again, so when we implement that policy, I think, again, if you simply, again, if you locked in a 414 or any of the other numbers, I think next year we'll not have this controversy. But this year, I do think you're, you're setting ourselves up for a controversy, which is fine. I'm willing to, to explain it. I just don't know that, again, if this ends up being a five to zero, maybe it won't be, maybe it won't be interesting to the media. But right now, you know, this very, very slight reduction in the mill levy based on, you know, from what we published, I think that that, it's exactly what we did a couple years ago. We, we published it, we changed it after it was published. We explained it, it didn't seem to matter. And again, I'm, I'll support you if that's what the majority wants to do. Thank you.
I think in, in response to that, in terms of the Fire District budget, the main difference than, you know, the main budget is that there's a lot more fluidity in it. Last year and this year is night and day in terms of where we thought we were and where we're going to be. Valuations increased, so therefore gave us some maturity, which certainly helps the Fire Department budget. Who knows what evaluations will be next year? So that's going to keep us on edge and vigilant, but we still need to be programming for, you know, hard times ahead and do good administrative management decisions to, to make it as efficient as possible.
And I might also say, again, to me, the messages that we've used in the past, we still have eight firefighter positions that are unfilled. Maybe we don't need to fill them, but they're still shown on the books if I understand correctly. We're still showing eight unfilled positions?
There are eight held positions, six of which are firefighters, two are administrative positions.
We still have positions that have, that are still showing as unfilled FTEs.
Right.
On the books. And I, I, I agree that we're, we're feeling a lot better about the, the financial situation of the Fire District because of the growth in assessed valuation, but it, it seems to be a lot more dynamic than the larger county budget.
Yes.
And so for, at the moment, things feel better, and we, we could do this, but I just, I think it also sends a message that the tax, they'll be termed as a tax cut, very minimal, but we're not considering the fact that there are some needs we haven't, we haven't filled in the, in the Fire District budget. So I'm concerned about the messaging that's going to come out here. Again, I will, I'll only support that if you all want to do that, do that, that's fine. I'll, I'll go with it.
I would say it's not a tax cut. I mean, you're the only person calling it a tax cut. It's not a tax cut. It's, it's using the same target. We don't even know what the final mill levy is.
See what the media calls it.
I, I'm comfortable saying we're just trying to stay consistent and stay consistent with what our mill levy has been, and we're going to manage our responsibility within that. I won't use that other language at all, but I think people appreciate the fact that we're trying to stay steady.
Particularly when this has values going up.
Correct. Okay. Do you get a feel for what we want you to do?
I did. Thank you very much.
And I think that's it for this question.
Yep. Unless there's any other questions, I'm done.
Okay. Well, I have a question.
Okay.
On, may I... On, manager sent out some notes yesterday, and I'm not quite sure I understand about the needing to do two motions for the CIP. Are we needing to do that? Yes, no? Oh, Richard?
I had asked if, if, if the budget, the county budget can be separated into two things, the budget and the CIP. I didn't know if that was possible legally, to have two votes in case somebody grabs more vote for one, not the other. And I think if we found out legally, that's okay.
Yes.
The question is whether or not the commission is okay with taking that approach. That would be one thing I was going to bring up. And I would like to have that option, but jump up and down if the commission says not to separate that out.
We have a ruling on that, whether we can do it separately?
We, we can do it separately, legal. And we also checked with the Kansas Department of Administration, the municipal services team, and they said there was no reason we couldn't.
Well, I'd like them to be separate if possible.
So, so we, so we would vote, have a vote on approving the budget without the CIP?
It, it would include the cash-funded portion of the CIP, because that is already in the operating budget. What really would be, in the first motion, would be that operating budget with the cash-funded CIP. The second motion with resolution would be the project portion that's funded either with outside dollars or that's funded with bond funds.
So, hmm. Well, I, I have, I need to think about, think about this a little bit. If it's legal and commissioners want to do that, well... I'd rather not, you know, be less messy than more messy tomorrow, but it doesn't, I guess it doesn't hurt anything. Okay. So we'll, we'll wait till tomorrow to see if there's a motion, then? Is that what we're going to do on this one? Or do you want to kind of have a consensus today? Do you have? Well, I don't know, whatever is...
I think we, we have prepared some draft resolutions and some draft motion language, and so we'll be prepared in either case.
Okay.
So the purpose of that is so that we can do a line item veto, basically, on CIP projects? Or what's the purpose?
No, to differentiate between the two, and might be happy with one and not be the other.
But if you're not voting on something, you would want something changed in that one that you're not voting for, that you're not happy about? Would that be what you're trying to do, is to be able to change something in that one that, that you'd vote against?
I don't know necessarily, but...
Or just send a signal?
It may be a lost cause, I don't think it would be worth that one over that, I think, I don't know. But, yeah. I guess it's just not there again. Do this, might do that, vote all at once, and that kind of thing, you know?
Well, I'm just trying to get what, what the ultimate goal is.
I might be more favorable to one and not the other. And not want to have to vote against the whole thing or for the whole thing, if, you know, if, if one part of it reaches a certain level of concern, that, you know, you know what I mean? Not that you ever like everything on...
But the only, the only separation is CIP and revenue.
Right.
Okay. All right.
I don't anticipate any motion being for changes to the CIP.
Okay. Respect for maybe to the budget. All right, any, any other questions or conversations you have? All right.
Thank you.
I guess, I guess we're, I'm at least as confused as I was, so... All right, anything else, Mr. Manager, and then, Mr. Yost?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to introduce our two new attorneys here.
Oh, good.
The commissioner is involved, I met them, the manager, I don't think I met them, but I want the other people to see the basis that go with the names. So if they could stand, Will Dear, who is closer this way. Will comes to us from the private sector. He has a lot of experience in finance, a little bit in employment law. And Mike Hesenger comes to us from the District Attorney's Office. But prior to that, he has served as chief research counsel to Court of Appeals Judge Powell. They're both going to be doing contracts, they're both going to be doing HR. We're just going to kind of split the account down the middle, and they'll, they'll both take half. It's been our experience that everybody, a lot of the departments, the help they need is with HR and contracts. So we want them to be able to work with one client. I want their clients to be able to have one attorney they can work with. So they started about a week ago, and they're, they're both hitting the ground running. I think they're, they're organized now and ready to take whatever we need them to do.
Okay.
So Will and Mike are here to help folks, and if you need something, just give them a call.
Well, welcome, we're glad you're here. Thank you. All right, anything else? Where am I looking? Okay, highly, the, the election commissioner.
Good morning, commissioners. I wanted to just give you a quick update. Part of what I wanted to talk about was, as you are aware, today is primary election day. As you can tell, we're not swamped, and that's why I'm able to be over here. We have thirteen polling sites open, all of them were ready for voters far before polls needed to open, which is just exciting to see. This is our sixth election of the year. Some of you have been interested in the turnout of this election versus the last election of its kind, because this is the first time we've had a city-school election in the fall. So I thought I'd let you know that in this, the last like-election would have been 2013. That election was on February twenty-sixth, and we were fighting major snowstorms. We had about nine inches of snow, and we had less than five percent voter turnout in that election. So far, with the voters that we've had vote early, in person, by mail, and then voted so far this morning, we were at just shy of three percent voter turnout when I walked over here this morning. So it looks like we will, hopefully, I'm optimistic that we will go past that five percent voter turnout at some point today. So I first off just wanted to give you that update. So things are running very smoothly. We're excited to see our election workers doing great with the new voting equipment, that sort of thing. And just, also just remind you that with that new voting equipment, one of the things that we have gained is added transparency with having that paper ballot for every ballot that we count. The other thing I wanted to talk to you about is, as you all know, I've met with each one of you on this matter. The print shop had included a decision package for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for postage for our office, for our needs for 2018. And when I met with, with each of you, a recurring question that I received from, from multiple members of the board was, what are things that we're required to do by law versus what is it that we do that's not required by law? So I went through the 2016 budget, what we spent. If we can actually pass these to you all. I put together some numbers, and I apologize that this isn't, wasn't in any kind of presentation, but I actually finished this this morning while polls were opening. And I went line by line down with what we mailed, the amount, what the postage rate was, and then basically why we mailed it. So obviously, our biggest item that we had that we mailed was the flyer that contained the absentee ballot application information on early voting, and then a reminder of polling place. We sent, that went out to two hundred and fifty-five, eight hundred and eighty-six people. And because we used the postal pre-sorting on that, we paid basically twenty-seven cents an item for just over seventy thousand dollars. Our justification for that, which we've all talked about, and multiple ones of us don't agree, and I understand that, but is line control for the polling place, education for the voters, and workload control for our office. I have extra copies of this, Mr. Manager, if you would like one. Sorry, okay. The next thing that we have is ballots. We have sent, in 2016, we sent out just shy of seventy-four thousand ballots at about thirty-four thousand dollars, and that is a requirement of KSA twenty-five dash eleven twenty-three. Confirmation cards, about twenty-two thousand of those. Those are required by multiple Kansas statutes and by the National Voter Registration Act, Section Eight. Notices of disposition, this is the card that the voter receives saying you're registered to vote, and here's all your information. We sent out a hundred and, almost a hundred and fifteen thousand of those for almost forty thousand dollars. Those are required by the National Voter Registration Act, Section Eight, and multiple Kansas statutes. Proof of citizenship notices, those are required by Kansas Administrative Regulation. KDHE batch notices, I know that means nothing to you, but this is something we receive, proof of citizenship documents from the state on a monthly basis, and then we have to send people notifications saying, I know we sent you a letter saying you weren't fully registered, but now we found your document, and now you are registered. So that's what those are. We spent about seven, sixteen hundred dollars on federal court injunction notices. Those were notices that we were required to send due to a federal judge's ruling. That judge, it required us to send these notices, and then actually required us to send those, basically thirty-five hundred people, also a notice of disposition. So about thirty-five hundred of those notices of disposition were also due to federal court injunction. Polling place change notices, those were not required in 2016. I do not imagine that life would go well if we did not tell people where they were supposed to go to vote. But there has since been a law passed that will be in effect in 2018 that does require us to send those. Party rejection notices, these are people who tried to change their party between two thousand and, or I'm sorry, between June first and September first. Law requires us to reject that. The law does not specifically say we are required to send a notice. However, in other areas, it does say if we are rejecting any part of the application, we have to send notification. So we use that to say that we are required to send that notification. And then the last, or the next category would be notices to our election workers of alerting them to where they are placed and when their training is. And that is required by KSA twenty-five dash twenty-eight oh one. And then we just have miscellaneous mail. That is just mail that somebody may call and request something be sent to them. Somebody may call and request a replacement ballot. That's not categorized in the same way as these other ballots, so it's just miscellaneous mail. So I just wanted to give you this information so that you had that when making decisions tomorrow, and then just see if anybody had any questions. I'm sorry, I threw a lot of information at you very quickly.
Any questions?
I obviously don't expect the amounts of how many we send to be what, in eighteen, as to what we sent in fifteen, or in sixteen, because we won't have the mass number of registrations coming through that we did in sixteen. All right, that's all I had, thank you.
Okay, anything else? Everybody wants to bring up our elected folks? If there isn't anything else, we need an orderly attempt to get cookies. We don't have, we don't want to have fistfights break out, so... But if there is nothing else, well, then we will be adjourned.